Yeah, so you can lead us up.
I'm proud. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent, and Mayor Mungy?
Here. Can you get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We'll go on to presentations. First one is presentation for our outgoing EDA members. Tom Schiffsky and Robert Do. Can you please come up? Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm just privileged that Robert Do could stop golfing in, down in Arizona to come back for this, so. Florida was at this time. Usually it's Arizona. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. So we have, I have my first one is for Tom. Seven years on the Economic Development Authority, and we appreciate your service, and thank you for being a business here in North St. Paul, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Ooh, weighs a lot. Careful.
Yeah, they do weigh a lot, so.
Yeah. Don't let the wife get a hold of it.
No.
No leg lands?
There you go.
That's a nice one.
And Robert, thank you for 14 years of dedication. You've seen a lot, you've done a lot, and the city's definitely grown from it. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Can I go straight on?
Want us in this, too?
All of us?
All right, come on, Andy.
Get us all in there. These are members.
Good-looking guys.
Everybody's ducking.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Did you drop your head in there? You went the opposite direction of what we thought was gonna happen, huh?
Thanks, Tom, Robert.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next presentation is the Park and Recreation Commission Annual Report. Brandy lead that up.
Represent. I was saying I don't think I can continue all of the wonderful dad jokes that we've already heard in this meeting, but I'll do my best. Yeah.
Want me to entertain?
Sure.
Figure out something. I got new clothes. Lands' End had 50% off, 50% off, so. My wife got me some new shirts, so that's why the mayor's styling tonight.
Very impressive.
New wardrobe.
It's black and white.
Yeah, so is my hair, so is my pants. There's absolutely no color in this guy.
All guys wear black and white.
No.
Not colored contrast.
That's right.
Maybe a splash of blue.
Is it working?
It's working.
Okay, arrow down?
Yep, whenever you're done.
He'll grow out of it. That's right.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. My name is Laura Greenley-Carp, and I'm the vice chair for the Parks and Rec Commission.
And I'm Lloyd Grochek. I'm the part of the chairman of the Park and Rec Commission, so thank you for having us here tonight.
Welcome.
And we are here representing, of course, our whole commission, but we want to make sure that we got in front of you so we can highlight all the wonderful, wonderful things we have been up to this previous year and what we plan on doing this next year. I'm gonna go through a couple of those highlights. I will have space for questions at the end, so if you could please reserve them for the end, I would greatly appreciate that. Are you all seeing the 2023 accomplishments slide?
Hmm.
Okay. This is our mission statement. We're an advisory council to you all. We put forth recommendations, and of course you approve or constructively criticize our recommendations and send them back to us for further review. A relationship you all love, or you all know very well. This past year, we did have, hang on, there's a pop-up. Three commission members leave our council. All of them had been with us for a very long time, so we were grateful for their service. That being said, we added two, three, two more.
Two more.
Two more commissioners in their, in their place for a total of seven, and they'll be starting with us this next month. One of the biggest highlights is finally being able to move forward on Howsey Park. We solicited recommendations. The bids that we received were much higher than anticipated, but we were able to work with the city, mostly Brandy and Jill and all of the people behind the scenes who were able to secure funding for us through the DNR Open Space Grant, so that we can actually start working on that in 2024. We were able to install beautiful signs that are modern, up-to-date, and will hold their own in our parks, more so than the wood signs. So as you're driving around, you should be able to see those at all entry points of all of our local parks. We worked with the Southwood Task Force to manage volunteer projects at this park. That's a relationship that we've had for a long time, and I want to make sure that we acknowledge that that relationship was really carried forward by Kathy Trundle, who passed away before Christmas, and that nature preserve would not be here without her. So we are working in partnership with that task force to make sure that we memorialize Kathy at Southwood itself, to make sure that everybody knows about her stewardship of that space. In 2023, we were able to host Fire and Ice. This year, we were not, because there's no snow. But last year, this continues to be a really exciting event where the community comes out. It feels very small-town homey. It's well-attended every single year, and we're grateful for the support of the fire department in managing all of the fires, and then the Salvation Army is there providing hot chocolate, and the Parks and Rec Commission is there generally being delightful and welcoming the community into our spaces. We continue to do music in the park, and I believe, I think we added another event. Do you remember if we added another?
We were going to.
Okay.
We're going, we're working on doing that for next year.
Yes, because they continue to be very well-attended.
Yes. So there's been some requests from the public.
For more events in that avenue. Food Truck Night is something that we hosted at Howsey this last year. That is something that we are not going to do this next year, but we are going to combine it with the Autumn Arts Festival because that is more bang for our buck and allows commissioners to focus on digging deeper into that event and spending their time doing that. And we have done the Star Watch for literally ever.
We had about 45, 50 people. Mike Lynch was phenomenal at what he does and pretty passionate at what he does. We had a beautiful, clear night, so he enjoyed it with the kids and the families, and it went over really, really well. It was like late September.
And that's something we're gonna continue to do weather-pending. A couple of joint projects. We were able to work with the Arts Commission, who can go more in-depth into what those joint projects look like, because they're presenting after us, so we'll just do a quick overview. We worked with them at the Fall Roundup Parade to prevent the autumn, or prevent, to promote the Autumn's Art Fest. That would be a terrible promotion. And then we, we, of course, debuted the Autumn Arts Fest as a partnership this year. It was extremely successful. I'll allow them to, again, tell you all about it. The mural at Silver Lake Park was something we worked on together. And lastly, we had a community member approach us about putting a little free library in as a memoriam at Polar Park, and we told them that sounds like a wonderful asset to the community. They took on the project, they built it, they worked with Public Works to install it, and then the family is continuing to oversee it as it's, lives its life out at Polar Park. Before I move into our 2024 goals, are there any questions about 2023 projects that I talked about?
Love the new signs. They like to see them. They're nice and bright, so appreciate that, too.
Like, it feels more modern.
Yes.
It feels more refined.
Mm-hmm.
It feels, yeah, clean. It feels better in general. Clean, yeah, exactly.
Long overdue, but.
Yeah.
We took a little time and got it right the first time.
Mm-hmm. Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay, last call for 2023. Can you tell I work in education? Okay, 2024. So these are the goals that we have for 2024. Of course, we have goals going forward outside of 2024, but we really wanted to focus on next year, or I'm sorry, this year. What are we actually tangibly going to be doing? So the first thing is Howsey Park reconstruction and grand opening. That is something that's been long overdue, and we're really excited to have done. I believe it's gonna be done by the end of summer at the latest, if not sooner. I feel like it's like spring.
They're gonna probably start in the spring.
They'll start in the spring, yep. Our next goal is to continue to work in partnership with the city on the Open Space and Park Plan. That plan is coming really out of community input, looking at what our community wants to see in their parks and analyzing how our community is changing and how our facilities within parks and within the city can continue to serve our community now and in the future. And so Brandy has really been doing a ton of work around that, and I believe going forward, the Parks Commission is going to be a big part of making sure that the vision and mission of the Open Space and Park Plan is executed in the way that makes the most sense for the city and the community. It's providing guidance and rational rationale for capital improvement, like I said, and it's gonna be a 10-year roadmap for maintenance and improvement of our parks and open spaces. So this is like a park improvement plan on steroids, basically. It's really looking at not just parks, but at the city and how they work together to overall enhance everybody's life experience within North St. Paul. We're also going to select a consultant for McKnight, a downtown park, and a passive park. Those are big undertakings. They're something that we're focusing on, and we don't want to do it on our own, and we want to make sure we do it well, so we're gonna tap a consultant for that. We're gonna continue to work on community events and supporting the responsibility of those events into our, our events into the communications coordinator, so kind of handing those off, obviously being available while we can, or where needed, but letting our communications coordinator own that. And lastly, continue to do research into community gardens and skateboard parks, both things that the community has directly reached out to us about wanting and making sure that where, and if it makes sense, it gets plugged into that Open Space and Park Plan. Did I miss anything?
No, you did great.
Okay.
That's why she's doing it.
So now I'll open it up to questions.
Go in.
You guys have more time than that.
I would just like to take this time to thank you for all your hard work and the wonderful things that you're doing with this commission, so thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Yep.
I appreciate it. So the three, you said McKnight, a passive park in downtown, is that what the three were?
Yes. As well as Howsey.
Howsey, yep.
Those are like our four main, well, Howsey we're taking action on. McKnight, Downtown, and Passive are, we're working with the consultants, so we can take action on it, but those are our main priorities. I'm just waiting for Tim to ask questions.
Of course I will. Thank you.
I'm gonna interrupt him. It has been a pleasure sitting on the commission with all of you guys. It's been a great first year, and I look forward to the next three years to see what more we have, what we can do with our city parks.
Thank you. We've got, we got a nice mixture of energy on our commission. Some of them are very, very Facebook and stuff that aged me, so I have no idea. Laura and Sarah are so good at it.
We're a diverse group.
Yep.
With varied skills that all support everybody.
Somebody needed to kick him off, so I'm glad that I can be serving on it.
I just wanna say you inherited a great corps.
All right, Tim, we're ready.
Yeah. First off, I want, you guys have been on as long as I have. It was only when I started, and you were somebody, Lloyd, you were there before I even came on board. Come a long way. A lot of pain, a lot of frustration, a lot of spirited conversations, for a lack of a better word. To finally get a park plan in place that we can then build into the financials of the city to make sure the funding is gonna come along, and Cassidy was lucky enough to inherit all of your hard work, so she'll shine, but I just.
Pretty much teed this up, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Nice.
Thanks for jumping in before me.
You're welcome. I'll help you out.
And I have had, I've had conversation with senior manager Frandl at some point this year to have one of you, both of you, Brandy, Jill. There's three council members on here, well, two. Cassidy is a little bit on board. Haven't seen it. They don't know what it is.
What are you talking about?
The, the park plan.
Well, that's the matter, because we're moving on to the open space.
Which I don't know what that is at all, so I would love to, I'd love to find out about both.
Yeah.
Make sure that the priorities, that park plan, that, you know, the Park and Rec Commission have in place match up with that of, you know, the, the city plans. We had a couple of line items pop up on the budget this year that nobody knew what they're for. It was about $2 million worth of park stuff. So it got moved from 2025, I think, to 2027. I can make a guess as to what that was for, but, so just more education is probably needed for the, for the group of us who are sitting up here to make sure stuff doesn't keep getting pushed out into future years.
Yeah, I definitely think that would be something that we are all willing to do, and that being said, with the caveat of we're a volunteer commission, and yes, we help with the financials, but ultimately, at the end of the day, that's not our expertise. So if that's something that you work directly with the, the city on, to fully understand that, that's where I would go first, before you talk to us.
So we, so the finance department put them in, but didn't know what they were for. They were placeholders that came out of the Park and Rec and didn't know what the projects were. So that's why it's just a little bit better education. We're not asking Park and Rec to do finance. We're just asking for a little bit more education as to, to, to what the priorities are and what it is. You know, I'm assuming it could be McKnight, it could be a new building at Howsey, it could have been a bunch of things that were on that short-term priority list.
Yeah, that's some, I'm not sure exactly what you're referencing, so I'd have to.
Neither were we. That's why it got moved out two more years.
We've come a long ways since I started in 2008.
However.
We didn't even have an agenda. Well, we kinda had an agenda.
But that's, going, going back to that quickly, like, that's something that we can get back to you about. We just don't know off the top of our heads.
Yep.
And Brandy has helped develop the park, the Open Space and Park Plan significantly through last year and can work that, with them to help regarding the presentation moving forward, so.
Yeah, I would say we're all getting our feet after post-COVID transition of liaisons, transition of staff, transition of so many different.
Commission members.
Commission members, and now that we have a solid foundation, we're actually able to, like, get out of survival mode and have those conversations, whereas I think we were trying to have those before, and it just was not successful, because nobody had all of the information. So I agree that going forward, now that we have that foundation, that's something that we can all work together on, making sure everybody has the information that they need.
It was a good learning curve when we were doing the, the park improvement comprehensive plan, because we had one in place somewhat back about eight years ago, and then we had to kind of redo it, and then it.
Yeah, from scratch.
From scratch, and they did, the commission did a very good job with the help of all the staff from the city, and it's going really well. It's going very good in the last, like I said, in the last 16 years or whatever. We've come a long way. Yes, 2008, Tim. I was pulling buckthorn in Southwood.
Okay, well, you could go on forever, but I wanna make sure that we say thank you very much for this time. I'll open it up to any last ques, this is why we work together. If there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we will let the Arts Commission take over.
No additional questions. It's a huge compliment. You guys have come a long way. You've got a great, a great program laid out, and I'm excited to finally get to see things. Over two years that Parks didn't get to do much of anything.
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for everything.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, hang on, no. What about me?
About me?
Sorry, Tim.
Really?
Notice, notice the lawyer doesn't want to be in the picture for some reason?
I should stand in the background.
You weren't a very good commission member at the time, so.
That's why I'm on it.
You're a trip.
All right, next presentation is the Arts and Culture Commission Annual Report. Welcome, Tom.
Lisa's not here. Hey, welcome. I had to cheer her group on. Nobody else would. Nice job, guys.
Fired up.
Commission Day.
Especially to that caffeine-free Diet Coke.
Hey, Tom, there's an empty chair up here. Do you feel more comfortable presenting from a chair up here?
He's in the wrong spot. John would have to move over.
Move over.
Tim has a seat coming up soon.
Oh, is this my mic? Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks so much. City staff, thank you for having us here. I am honored to be here with two of our original members from the Arts and Culture Commission, Carrie Netto and Lisa Ritchie. Lisa started out as our city staff liaison and is now a full-fledged member, a commissioner on our Arts Commission. And I just want to begin by giving a shout to civic engagement, you know, commissions. The Arts and Culture Commission, the Parks Commission, all of you up there, you know, we was talking with the mayor earlier today. If you're the mayor or on city council in North St. Paul, that's pretty much a volunteer spot. Fire Department back there, Parks Commission, and all of our engaged citizens as well, you know. Anthropologist Margaret Mead said, you know, "You should never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. And so while we may not be changing the whole world, we think we're doing a lot to change our world here in North St. Paul. So I wanted to take a little bit of time and just talk about how we've been trying to get that going here with the Arts and Culture Commission, and we'll talk a little bit about what we're, what we have coming up in 2024 here. Our mission, our purpose, our reason for existence has been to inspire connection and community through the development of public art and cultural expression. So why do we do public art? You know, the reason we do all this is because of all the values that we believe public art can bring to a community, things like aesthetics and beautification, community engagement, placemaking, and identity. All of us have said how many times in our lives, "North St. Paul, you know the giant snowman on 36?" You know, how many of us have said that this is out? And the, and so one of the things we're trying to do here is say, "We're not just a giant snowman anymore. We have a lot more going on in North St. Paul, and we want the world to know about it." So placemaking and identity, and even economic impact is one of the values of public art, because we think that this can draw more people into our city. You know, some of the places we've been developing already, we think, we call them Instagrammable, you know, places where people might take a picture, post on social medias, and more and more people say, "Hey, what's going on there?", and we want to see more about that. So I'm gonna walk through the things that we've been doing. So this first one, I'm gonna just, I skipped this, there's too many words on this slide. But basically, what you should know is that we had last year increased our commission to, from five to seven members, and that allowed us to be much more vigorous in getting projects moving, because we could have sub-teams that could meet off-meeting schedule. As long as they weren't the majority of the group, we could have two people, three people meet and keep projects moving on between the meetings, and that was really important for us. And we also, last year, one thing I wanted to point out, as far as our people are concerned, is that we had a high school commissioner representative last year, which was really great. So a student from North St. Paul High School was on our commission. Paint Along with the ACC. So there were a couple, if you think about what the Arts and Culture Commission has been doing so far, we have been developing, I would say, routine programming and then developing public art in specific places. This is one of the routine programming things. So Paint Along with the ACC, we used to call it Paint and Sip, but we tried to stay away from that language, but just wanna be sure, want people to know that if you come to a Paint and Sip night, you can bring a bottle of wine with you. That's okay. But that's the idea, is recreate these types of things where we have an artist who walks people through what it's like to, to create their own painting and, and develop that artistic flair. This is something that we've generally held for adults, although we are 16 and up, right? So we have, we have some programming for children. We have some programming for adults as well.
And I will add to that, that I've had some requests for the 16 and under, so maybe we can.
Yeah.
Look in that direction as well, to add more activities.
Yep. This is something we just talked about in our last meeting, though, because why not open it up to all ages? And I think, well, you know, sometimes, you know, adults or older people would prefer to just have adults and older people, and we do, you know, we do things for all ages as well. But Lisa here was our artist-in-residence who hosted all three of those paint nights last year. Also, the art cart, so this is resurrected. There is a place in my heart for this, because when I was a kid, growing up in North St. Paul, we had something like the art cart. It was the craft, I don't remember what it was called exactly, but I loved it when that thing would show up in Casey Park and we could do crafts. And so that's something that we've recreated here with this old, this old trailer that we've had sitting around. We painted the thing orange, and some people might think it looks hideous or crazy, but we think it draws your attention. And there was community involvement, just how the thing is painted. We have hand prints and a lot of the things that we had, residents and people that were at the car show could come and paint on it. But that's been a lot of fun, and we, we roll that out at the car show and then also at all the concerts, music in the park. So another way that we collaborate with the Parks Commission. The next thing we did was utility box wrapping, so you've probably seen these in lots of different areas in the cities, if not other areas in the country. But this is something that we've been doing, because this is a really low-cost way to just kind of bring some visual interest and some, some artistic expression to the community. It, you know, there's, it doesn't really cost a lot, but it also gives us an opportunity to engage the community. The first two that we did, we had a survey poll online, and Carrie, I don't know if you remember how many people responded, but I think we had a pretty good turnout for that, for voting online on, on what people wanted to see, and so the, the two winners were the first two on the left. And then the next one we did, we, the, the commission just chose those, and our, the subgroup that was focused on the utility box wraps did that and chose that art. And so that's great, so we have more of that planned for 2024 as well. Our mural project, this is something, you know, that was really kind of the impetus for the Arts and Culture Commission in the first place, was this talk about trying to get a, a mural somewhere downtown. And so we'd really been hoping to try and get a mural downtown. We did not have a lot of money, but we took a shot, and we, we, we put a call for artists out to about 35 muralists. out to about 35 muralists and we had three of them respond who were willing to do something. And this artist, Taylor Berman, who responded, I, we absolutely could not believe his submission. He came with his family to explore Silver Lake and check out the, all of the ecosystem around the park and everything. And so he chose this red wing blackbird for very specific reasons and, and the, the, the reeds or whatever you call them, the plants that are in the mural are all part of the ecosystem that he saw around Silver Lake. So very specific reasons for that. And we, we really needed for this to be a home run and we think Taylor really knocked it out of the park on this one. So we feel really good about how that mural turned out and we hope to have more of those in the future. And we're very happily surprised with what we were able to get it done for cost-wise. Whoops, did I miss something? Nope. Project Snowy. So Project Snowy, this is something that was very near and dear to the heart of our former mayor, Terry Furlong, something we tried to get started when he was still on the council. But, and we're, we're still working on this. So, you know, we have one of these Snowys that's sitting right outside the front of City Hall. And we have been working with businesses all across North St. Paul to try and raise interest in this to see if we can get more businesses to participate. And so we have a, we have a fair number so far. We're trying to get more of those, but this will be, this is expected to launch here in the spring of this year. So it's taken a lot more strategic thought and planning than we expected because there's a lot of moving parts and details to this project. But we're happy this is moving along and we have, hope to have these Snowys out there this year. Next was the Autumn Arts Festival. You know, we're always, one thing I'll say is we're, we're always mindful that the money we're spending doesn't just come from the city, it comes from all of us. These are taxpayer dollars that go into this. And I hope some of you had the chance to attend the Autumn Arts Festival this year. I thought we had a really great event. We had TV coverages, coverage. We thought that our, our vendors who were there did very well from what they reported to us, that they had a very good day. We had a lot of great performers. We had a beautiful day. And that whole event cost $1,500. And so that was a great collaboration with the Parks and Rec Commission there. $1,500 and we recovered, I don't know, probably more than half of that through the vendor fees for the artists that were there. So this was a very low-cost event for the city and it was a great publicity and a great event for a lot of people that attended. As mentioned earlier by the Parks and Rec Commission, we also participated in the parade, fall roundup. And art in the city, this is kind of a fun little thing. And this was born out of art that was just happening by a youngster, this young girl in the city who started painting rocks and placing them in the front yard to create a snake out of rocks. And it caught on, on social media and so it became a thing. And, and so now she has this big rock snake in her front yard. And so we had her in and recognized her for that. And also that we have recognized some of our, our local school students who had art in the state fair and won some ribbons there. So it was really cool that we're starting to just recognize that art and, and make it part of our community. So moving forward, as you can see, so we're continuing with Project Snowy, as I mentioned. Additional utility box wraps. We have one located just outside of Roddy's that we've been working with them for a while. There's one located on the high school property that we're interested in doing, we hope to partner with the, the school district and the school on that one. Develop more community engagement opportunities. So one of the things we've been asking ourselves a lot is what's the culture part of the Arts and Culture Commission? And we need to define that for ourselves and, and work with the community to see what that means. So, so what does that cultural expression mean? Well, I think we can see cultural expression through public art and we can also see cultural expression through performance. You know, at our Autumn Arts Festival and the festival that we had the year before, we have had dance groups that were Indian dance. We had Mexican folk dance group. We had belly dancers. I don't know where they're from, but where do belly dancers come from? The Middle East? But anyway, so, so there's cultural expression that way, but we hope to see that reflected in the art as well as our, as our community continues to become more and more diverse over the years. Additional mural project, we hope to see, to collaborate maybe with a business this year where we can get a, another mural done, hopefully downtown. Art cart events, of course, this is the programming, it's just going to keep going. Now we've kind of developed a cadence for this, we'll just keep going with that. Paint along events, same thing, and the Art, Autumn Arts Festival again. So we're really looking forward to collaborating with the Parks Commission again and just keep growing that thing, make it better and better each year and, and make it a thing that people in North St. Paul and beyond plan for that weekend every year that they're going to be at the Autumn Arts Festival. Carrie, Lisa, anything you want to add?
No, great job, Tom. Yes, very good. I do want to thank you for supporting us. I'm extremely passionate about not only art, but also working with kids. And this opportunity has provided me both of those things and I look forward to the upcoming year and doing even more.
Thank you.
Well, everything's wonderful. The, the wraps are such a beautiful addition and then the mural. And then to have the muralists at the art festival was so cool. I mean, I think they, they ran out of birdhouses quite fast.
Yeah.
Sure. I look forward to seeing another mural in the city.
Me too. Any other questions or thoughts? Anything you'd like to see from the Arts and Culture Commission?
I, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you for all your hard work and everything you do for the city. Really, really appreciate it and you guys probably don't hear thank you near enough. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate everything. Take a step back, Tom. This is three years into the Arts and Culture. It's been around for three years.
Yeah.
I mean, you've moved fast.
We do. We, we keep a, keep a busy agenda. Staff keeps telling us to slow down, but we'll, we'll push them as hard as we can.
Want me to do it?
Thanks for having me.
Mayor's gone.
I'm going to represent for Lisa. I'm much, much better looking than the mayor, but I'll fill in.
Ah, you guys.
Come on, guys. Appreciate it, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you all.
All right.
All right. Consent agenda. Item A, January 2nd, 2024, city council meeting minutes. Item B, general claims of $1,637,494.74. Item C, HRA claims of $20,843.35. Project Snowy purchase agreement. Item E, building permit report for December of 2023. Item F, resolution accepting donations for December of 2023.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody want to pull anything? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the consent?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Swier?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next thing is open to the public. We have one internal and anybody online?
No.
Okay, with their hand raised at 707, we'll open to the public. You have the floor for three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Hi, John.
It's all your floor. Just don't take it with you.
John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. Third time, Lexus Nexus. Now, I don't know if I'm ever going to get an answer on this. I started out with the police department. This is the third time at council meeting. Where did it go? Is it coming back? Can you give me an answer? Do you want me to just shut up?
Any, I know you were looking in. Do you have any feedback on it?
With both Phil and Chief for where they're at with that.
Okay, well, then next week.
The only way you can get information is when Maplewood Police come into North St. Paul and then it appears.
Okay.
Because they're within our jurisdiction. Anyway, second item is the fine resolution that was passed with information on it that was, if true, someone is going to go to jail with a negative balance of $1 million in the electric fund. It's right there in the resolution that you signed. I was told on Thursday by the finance director that, well, you got to read the fine print up above. There's three columns and the information that they're certifying is in the first two columns, not the third column. So I have the third column, which says fund balance. And for example, the electric, the utility per this, the fund balance is a minus $1.1 million. Someone would go to jail if that was true, but.
And you did talk to the.
Yes.
The finance director.
Wasn't a fun situation. The voice was raised at me. I was the center of attention for the whole damn first floor. So I'm not happy. And I like Dan. He's the only person in the world who admitted to the electric utility charging too much. I've been going, coming to these places for 15 years and it's never been admitted and finally it was. Anyway. And the last item of the day is you had the fee schedule put out. I'm really interested in water because I want what the water bill to show what the state wants the people to see. And that is you use more water, you pay more and the bill doesn't. And I brought that up more than once, but I guess I'm never going to get that. But what I'm referring to are the charges for the water bill and even here, you can't get the straight information because the usage fees are wrong. This is a copy. Do with it what you desire.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for handing me this. Yeah. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. All right. 710, public hearings closed or public meeting? All right.
All right. City Business Action Items. First one up is consideration of development proposal for the 2329 17th Avenue East. So we're having a, looking for a recommendation to direct staff to repair a purchase agreement and development agreement for the city council's consideration.
This is for the Delaware project we just had our.
That's correct, yes.
And that will be, that will be 10 units, five buildings.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to, people that were into the workshop, so any questions about it?
I'd like to vote on it next meeting. That's my proposal.
We can have it.
Are we voting?
No. Clarification? Are we voting on it today?
This is a recommendation.
This is a recommendation to move forward to purchase it.
I'll move.
Or to sell it. You'll move?
So moved.
All right. Second. Councilmember Swier, councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
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 Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item B is the fire relief funding benefit increase agreement between North St. Paul Fire Relief Association and the city of North St. Paul. We have Chief Jason Mallinger here to discuss.
Welcome, Jason. Good to see you.
Hello, Mayor.
Hey, Chief.
Hello, councilmembers. I'd like to introduce you to our fire relief board members that are really the ones behind the scenes doing all the work. So if I could have our members come up.
Great.
Our president and lieutenant, Tim Gangle.
Nice.
We have our vice president and captain, Chris Mellon, our treasurer and captain, Ethan Johnson, and our secretary, Lieutenant Jacomo De Jacomo. We also have in attendance our trustees, Alan Hansen and Samantha Sheppel, along with young firefighter, Justin Kuchamaiters, who is along to just learn about the process. So.
Nice. Welcome, everybody. Thank you.
I just wanted to have them come up so you could meet them. I'm going to just ask the treasurer and the president to remain up here with me if you guys want to have a seat right there and give you any information if, whatever's needed before you tonight as it relates to first, the agreement that we have with, with the city in regards to benefit increase. And if you'd like me to go up or us into detail on that, if you have any questions, I can kind of walk that through if you would like.
Good. We're good.
You're good. Okay. So that's our, our first step is the agreement after more or less the process is being done differently now as it relates to what's required from the state for us. So we've had our, our board have meetings with the city manager and Dan to come to this agreement. So in order for us to move on to the next item, we would need to pass this resolution.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to pay, to bring up the fire relief funding benefit? So moved, Your Honor. So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Second before or after is our recommendation for increase of the maximum benefit to the firefighters for their relief pension. Again, here for, to answer any questions or give you any information that's needed other than what's before you.
Second.
Yeah, we read it. So get a motion to, okay, councilmember Cole, councilmember Swier, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work. We really do. That's, we, you guys are great. Thank you.
You'll, may have noticed, there's a lot of people and besides in the meeting here tonight, but a lot of students around. We have a full house tonight. Captain Johnson and Assistant Chief Hickson are, are teaching a fire one and two class. We have about 25 students around from the metro area that are part of the Ramsey County Chiefs Association that are in class tonight. Additionally, we have Lakeview EMS teaching six students EMR.
Those are nice. Went and said hi.
So we have four of our firefighters in there plus two students from Stillwater. So a very busy house tonight.
Nice.
A very positive.
If I could get the whole fire department to come up or you guys are here in front and the council will come down, we'll get a picture of everybody together up front here.
And all I heard is if one of us goes down, we're pretty much covered tonight.
Come on down.
On this side, please.
All right. Wherever she wants. She's the boss when it comes to the camera.
We're good.
Carrie, this is really good. My problem. It's going to be a new pile of ice.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you for all the support.
Hey, thank you.
Getting our exercise in today. I should have brought my strength thing.
Did we pass something saying there's going to be more pitchers or something?
Yeah. Did you not listen? The mayor got a new shirt. Fair enough. He's going to get all the pitchers in this.
Did I touch this next and final?
I told you. What's that show, Toolman? The guy that always wore the final shirts?
Yeah.
Al?
His name's Al.
That's me. All right. Reports, looks like we're up to reports from you, sir.
Did we pass something saying there's going to be more pitchers or something?
Yeah. Did you not listen? The mayor got a new shirt. Fair enough. He's going to get all the pitchers in this.
Can I touch this nice and flannelly?
I told you. What's that show, uh, Toolman? The guy that always wore the final shirts?
Yep.
Al?
His name's Al.
That's me. All right. Reports, looks like we're up to, uh, reports from you, sir. City manager.
Uh, a couple items for you. Fire had a, uh, fire call over the weekend, uh, sounds like a place full of another cooking incident. It was just more smoke than fire, but, uh, they were able to take care of that. Public Works, I've been discussing with them about the ice rinks for this year and we had a very mild December. Uh, we get a week now of sub-zero temperatures, um, and then we're right back into the thirties and mid-thirties next week. Um, it does not make any sense for us to try to bring them together and make them open this year. It takes usually a couple weeks of good freezing weather to build that up and it just doesn't look like it's going to be worth their time to do that this year. So unfortunately, they won't have any. Electric with the cold weather's been doing some relighting, uh, at the well, doing some lighting in the mechanics bay at the public workshop. Um, as any of you guys saw, if you were anywhere in North St. Paul last Thursday on the eleventh, there was a large dip in the power and then it came back on. Excel Energy's fortunate to not have somebody that passed away on that. Uh, they put a grounding strap or, uh, wire onto a hundred and fifteen thousand volts and everything worked exactly as it should as far as the protective equipment. It's the only reason that the person's still alive. So, yeah, pretty scary. Took us a while to figure it out, but it was every, our whole system saw it, so figured it was something from the sub went out there and saw that they were doing some work on their power transformer and were, you know, grounding it to make sure everything was dead and, um, when something didn't work, they, they had bad knowledge of what was, uh, hot and what wasn't. Sure they'll be looking into that. That's kind of it. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to reports, um, council commissions and committees. You have anything, councilmember Norby?
Um, unfortunately, I was ill for the planning commission meeting, but we voted on what they passed today, so that was a good deal. And the next planning commission meeting is February first.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Swier?
I don't have anything except for Parks and Rec meets here next week at six-thirty, council chambers, uh, the twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cole?
EDA's got another month off, we don't have quorum.
All right.
Somebody's on vacation.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, general business. Councilmember Norby?
Um, I do have a question for councilmember Cole. Um, in our second council meeting ever, um, almost a year ago now, um, at the Fire and Ice, um, councilmember Cole invited the fire department. Um, I believe he was referring to a three-on-three between the fire department and the city council. Now that it's canceled, I didn't know if he had a replacement issue for the fire department.
Boy, I sure don't remember that, but, uh, uh, feel free.
That's good. Sorry?
Three new people, uh, versus the fire department.
Well, I could use a fourth replacement, I guess, why not? Maybe the warranty's still going.
FYI, tomorrow night, fire department training, we are utilizing the evening seven. Uh, fire department is doing a warm-up call and SCBA exercise breathing down, uh, so we're going to do that inside while playing dodgeball.
Nice. Pretty dodged.
If you want to stop by at six fifteen.
Okay.
Dodgeball.
Well, if you want to go buy, you know, uh, utilities and pick up some wrenches, if you can dodge wrenches, you can dodge balls, so just, you can practice with wrenches. All right, thank you. Nice, is it, did I ask you already for general business? Anybody? Everybody?
Have you asked anybody?
I have no idea. Can't remember. I asked you. Then it's you. Then it's you.
Oh, I got nothing.
All right, you got anything?
Uh, I've got not a whole lot.
Okay.
Somewhere down the road, is it this month or next month that we're going to be at the, uh, History Society and we're going to be the presentees?
Twenty-seventh, twenty, twenty-seventh, I think, of February.
Yep. So just put that on your calendar, it'll be riveting, year two.
Yeah, we, that really went well last year.
It was fun.
That was a lot of fun. Lot of, lot of, lot of, lot of good information, good group, looking forward to that.
And people should attend because Sue brings cookies.
Yes.
So...
Yep, cookies.
Yep.
Very good.
Get there early because otherwise you get the snow ones.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, tomorrow, did I bring up tomorrow? Yep, tomorrow, um, I'll be at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, uh, talking about, with the legislatures about the path, uh, to finish the, the walking path around Silver Lake. So on the Century side, so they're having a, they're having a, a bus that, uh, the representative are coming, we're going to meet there. Of course, it's cold, so we're going to go inside the bus and talk about the path. We spent, uh, as a city, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, of course, on the west side of the lake with our sidewalk and have a nice path, you know, all the way around except for the, the, um, the side over at, uh, Century, of course. You could dodge balls, you can dodge Century Avenue, try walking down that. So it's a good, a good, uh, to talk about and see if we can finish the path around. So that's tomorrow at nine o'clock, they're going to be pulling up in that, uh, church across the street from, uh, Silver Lake over on the Oakdale side, we'll talk to them. There's nothing else? I'll ask for a German.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Swier?
Second.
Second.